Tommy Boyd, please report to the principal's office. Tommy Boyd, report to the pr- I'd come shake your hand, but no. I'll pass. Am I supposed to be talking to people? Man, I tell you what. No.
Are you an independent?
I'm an independent. I'm just glad to see a big turnout.
Is you?
At the polls. Well, I mean, I've heard, I've heard a lot of people wanting to run. I've told everybody, like, go ahead, please do.
I hadn't seen anything about it at all, surprised.
There is, I've had like four or five people in different areas saying that they wanted to run. Wow, look at this, we get the whole administrative branch today. Only one missing is Mrs. Hitt, or Director Hitt, I'm sorry. Director Hitt. The part of Council Clerk will be played by Greg Eads. So do I get to? Greg, how you doing, sir? Nice to see you.
I think our clerk has too many fires, irons in the fire.
Or who?
Our clerk.
Yeah, it sounds like it, yeah. Too many irons in the fire. So, did you get that thing from Amy? Yeah. Did you look at it? Take a look at it.
Yeah.
Because I think it's less than what she told us. If you look at the total income tax up at the top here. She told us. Oh, no, it's, it's less than what Amy told us. If you look at the total revenue brought in after they, after they brought it back, it's, it's, I think it's less than a hundred thousand dollars, or, or a hundred thousand. But you gotta look, she's got something highlighted on it. But if you look at the total brought in, because that's what she looked at. My thing, total brought in, it goes from like, uh, fifty, five point nine to six point seven. It, you have to look at it.
Right.
But I don't think it's gonna make sense. I don't think it's as much as.
Josh, do you have the agenda?
Uh, it's on the, it's email too.
It's on email.
I got it. Yeah, I'll share with you. I'll share with you.
I like that one, I can write it.
I know, me too. That's, that's why I'm calling.
Call the meeting, no order. If everyone please stand for the budget allegiance and then no more silent reflection, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since the clerk is absent this evening, I'll do a roll, a roll call.
We know for, on.
I think, did you guys turn on Rex? Yeah. Uh, Councilman Eads.
Here.
Councilman McDaniel.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Hitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Here.
Councilman Stoll.
Present.
Councilman Norman.
Present.
Everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes. Free this meeting. Corrections, concerns, questions. Hearing that all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign. Uh, there are no public hearings tonight. For communications. Audience concerns, we do have quite a few this evening. And we will start with Clarissa Ramey. You could, please state your address. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, 188 South Walnut Street.
Mic on.
Clarissa, since there's so many, five minutes, maybe.
Okay. I have a handout I'd like to hand you guys. It has, um, information in it that I could use, that you guys can see. And I have ten in there, so if you guys want some over there, you can as well.
Do you want to start?
Clarissa.
Speak your little.
You want me to move it?
I can't hear you. There you go.
Thank you.
So I'm Clarissa Ramey, the current Queens Director for the London Strawberry Festival. I'm here to speak to represent the festival and express our concerns regarding the recent changes imposed upon us. We hope to work with the city council to address these issues and ensure the festival's continued success. The handout provided contains supporting materials for the points that I will be discussing. First, I'd like to acknowledge the additional footage that was given to us this year, allowing us to extend our festival area, and we appreciate the accommodation. However, we have the concerns, we have concerns regarding the new street setup implemented last year. While we understand the intention behind the changes, we believe they pose safety risk and inconvenience for our attendees. Particularly the elderly, parents with strollers, and individuals with mobility issues. The numerous cords and hoses crossing the road create tripping hazards. We do understand that they made boxes to go over those wires and hoses. We had them last year. But it still does not help the individuals with mobility issues trying to navigate over those, over those bulky boxes, which could be managed by reverting to the previous layout, where these elements were safely, were safely secured behind the vendor booths. Furthermore, the current configuration hinders our police force's ability to effectively patrol the area. The vendor booths now create a barrier, making it more challenging for officers to monitor their festival grounds. Another concern is the timeframe imposed on, uh, imposed on our event. While seventy-two hours is sufficient for the festival itself, we require additional time for vendor setup. Allocating only seventy-two hours forces vendors to set up the same day as the festival opens, creating safety issues and confusion among attendees. Well, we, we propose allowing vendors to set up Wednesday evening to ensure a smooth and safe experience. Regarding the concerns about the main route being closed for an extended period of time, we understand the necessity of maintenance. However, we would like to point out that the main intersection closure for maintenance, as shown on page two of your handout, demonstrates that temporary closures can be managed without significant disruption. Lastly, we would like to address the safety concerns regarding the emergency access. According to our calculations, the vendor booths will only occupy about twenty-five feet of the forty-five width street, leaving twenty-one feet of clearance for emergency vehicles. We question the assumption that the current layout is necessary for emergency access, as fire trucks can still access the area even with the vendors present. With supporting documents on pages three through five of the handout, the average car length is sixteen feet, and that is longer than our vendors that will be sitting there. I have one question to ask. If a fire was to happen at this exact moment we're sitting here, where will our fire trucks park for that burning building? They're gonna park in the middle of the street, because there is currently, there is currently cars parked on public access on the curb right now. We have included testimonials from other festivals and diagrams of their layouts on pages six through nine of the handout. We have shown relevant guy, we have showed relevant guidelines from Ohio to demonstrate that our proposed changes are reasonable and in, in line with industrial standards. In conclusion, we wrote, we respectfully request that the city council consider our concerns and recommendations. The London Strawberry Festival has been a beloved tradition in downtown London for over thirty years, and we are committed to ensuring its continued success. We appreciate your attendance to the, attention to this matter, and we look forward to working together to find a solution. So, um, like I said, if you wanna look through here, the first page you guys already have, it was the layout that was sent, the new layout that was sent for us to, um, go by, and that's the one if we had to, that we would choose. The second one is, um, that was posted about the street closure, because that is a big concern, on that main route being closed, um, for a long period of time. And we under, like I said in my speech, we understand about maintenance, but we can still have a little bit more time there without causing huge disruptions. It's doing it right now for maintenance. Um, and then the next three pages are, um, fire codes and, um, different supporting documents that show twenty feet of clearance that's needed. And then the last three pages are, four pages, I'm sorry, are, um, other festivals that we have reached out to that also have their layouts the exact same way. They're on the curb, not on the center of the street. They're on the curb. Um, and if you read through those, a lot of them tell you that, um, this, they lay it on the curb for the exact reason of giving enough clearance for the fire and EMS to be able to travel safely through the, through the festival to get to wherever they need to go. And I wanna also point out, um, on the layout, in the, on the new layout that you guys want us to have, you're giving us five feet in the center, which then gives twenty feet on the curbs. That's not even possible for food trucks. Ninety percent of our food trucks are a minimum of twelve feet long, or wide, I'm sorry. So then by doing that, by having twelve feet wide in the center, it does not give you your twenty feet clearance on the edges. Putting our festival food vendors back on the curb will indeed still give you twenty-one feet of room down the center for emergencies if need be. So those are some of the main points that I, um, wanted to bring up. Um, and like I said in my speech, if a fire was to break out right now as we are sitting here, are you telling me that those fire trucks are gonna park on the curb and not in the center of the road to fight that fire? There's no way. There's cars, public parking there right now, and they're not gonna wait for those people to move. And half of those people are probably in the burning building anyways. So if it's, if it is a safety hazard to the point to where we have to move to the center because the fire trucks need to be on the curb, is there any kind of explanation on what are we gonna do right now if a fire was to happen with those cars on the curb? Because it's taking up the same space that we would use.
I would think that maybe your committee needs to meet up with the safety service director, uh, fire chief, police department.
Check, check. There we go. So, um, their president was in these discussions when we had him, along with Councilman Norman, myself, and Eve, and she was nice enough to come in and speak with Eve and get all the information that they needed. I think that, you know, this is in front of council now. So if you guys wanna amend it, then you amend it. You've, you've gotten the information from us, you've gotten the information from safety services. If you have any questions, ask us, but, you know, I think this legislation's in front of you guys, and if you feel that you need to amend it, then you amend it and you vote on it that way. I do have one question, though. You talked about the seventy-two hours.
Mm-hmm.
That, how many, you said Wednesday or whatever, did you have an hour amount?
So, yeah, we would at least like another six hours, just so our vendors can have time Wednesday night to set up. When they, when they set up Thursday morning, uh, the people don't understand that we're not open. They think the festival's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. They don't realize that there's a timeframe of five o'clock when we open, let's say. So they end up coming while our vendors are still setting up, and it causes a hazard between vendors driving in with their food trucks and people trying to walk around thinking that we're open. So setting up on Thursday just does not work.
Okay, and, and I know that you guys are all pretty much new in leadership positions. Some festivals, we did have issues in the past where the road was supposed to be shut down at four. We'll say, for example, it was shut down at eleven AM, right? So that's where the timeframe came in. When we spoke about it, I think John felt that that was an ample amount of time. But I don't, you know, that, that portion of it, I don't have an issue with. If you wanna amend it to seventy-eight hours, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Six hours more?
Yeah. At least, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, seventy-eight to eighty-four hours? We were just trying to come up with a number, so people stuck to it, right?
Yeah.
And so we can make sure that, you know, we know when the streets are gonna be shut off, when the barriers get pulled. And also, we know when, if the street department comes in, when everything's gonna be off. Because we had that issue also where, you know, we don't wanna have our street guys come in at midnight and then have to wait till two in the morning to clean the streets, because we're waiting on people. And, and like I said, I'm not gonna dwell on the past. I know you guys are trying to do the best you can, and you guys are the new crew moving forward, and we appreciate that. And that's why, you know, that's where the timeframe came from.
Yeah, and the, the, um, midnight is fine. We've talked to our stage people, we've talked to our bands, our vendors, um, they can all be out by midnight.
Okay.
So that's not the issue. It's just the setup in the morning, or the setup on Wednesday. At least giving them time from like six to midnight is fine for setup. But asking them to come in at midnight to set up is just, it's just too hard for them.
That, that's, that's fine. I don't, I don't, I don't have an issue with extended hours. And then anything else, as council goes through this legislation, I assume you'll let it go through readings. Feel free to reach out to us, feel free to reach out to the police chief, the, the fire chief, uh, street superintendent, whoever you want to talk to and ask questions.
And I just wanna say, like, when you guys do have these, if you guys bring this up again, um, we would like it to be brought up here, so that way the rest of us can be here for questions, comments, concerns to ask us. Yeah.
Got a question. Are you able, is the committee able to put together, uh, what kind of a change you're wanting to see and then email it to each council member?
Yeah, we can, um.
I mean, it's a lot of detail to keep track of.
Yeah, we can definitely put together a, a layout that we would like to see. But it is basically a layout that's happened in the past minus last year. But we can definitely draw out a specific layout with them on the curb like we want. Yeah. That's not a problem.
So I have a couple of questions. First one is, uh, I see that, uh, one of them is the Parade of Hills, and one of it is the Johnny Appleseed Festival.
Mm-hmm.
What are the other two?
Um, well, the other one, the, the layout that you see on the.
No, no, I mean, in your example, you have Hi Amanda, we set up our vendors based on, what festival is that one, that first one? What, who is, who, who is, who is Tina Cut, Cutwright representing there? What festival is that? Because it doesn't, it doesn't show us what festival that is.
Let me look, I have my email right here. I can tell you.
Mr. Norman, you're asking who, 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 or text message, pretty much, or?
Right.
So one of those Parade of Hills?
Yeah, one of them's Parade of Hills, I got that, and I got the Johnny Appleseed. But the first and the third one, it doesn't say who they are.
Zanesville, Ohio.
So the first one, Mrs. Cutwright is Zanesville?
Yeah.
And do you know what the festival is?
I, it doesn't say in here, it just says Zanesville, Ohio. Um, I can email her back. Amanda got these for me, which is the Queens Director Assistant, so I can ask her, um, because I, it doesn't say in her little thing what it is.
Okay. And then how about the, the one on the third page from Jeff?
The one that says, Dear Amanda, we set up our streets?
Yes.
That one is, um, Johnny Appleseed Festival, the J-A-F-E.
Okay, so the last two.
Yes.
So really, we, we had three.
Yes, and I, I had more, I just, uh, got them today, so I didn't print them to put in here. But one of them I did wanna point out that I got today was from Crestline Harvest Festival. And, um, I know shutting down a main road was a big concern, but I wanted to read hers. She said, "Our festival is on the State Route sixty-one, which is a four-lane highway that turned, that runs through the middle of our village." And, um, she does put in here that setting up on the curb line is the best and safest option because we reduce trip hazards from power cables and water lines. Plus, we also are able to give first responders better, better access to areas in case of an emergency. And I just wanted to throw that one in there, because I do know that one of the main concerns has been the state route being shut down. But we are not the only festival that has a state route shut down. Even Mount Sterling has their little street fair, and they shut down the exact same road that we shut down, and they are a mu- I don't even, are they even a town, or is it a village? It's a village. So they are much smaller than us, and they shut down the exact same road as we do. But I know that that's kinda been a concern too, so I wanted to let you know. There are many other festivals in Ohio, some even smaller than we are, that shut down a main road, and it doesn't cause any issues.
Got another one. So I, I met with you guys, that's no secret, right? We met at Cappy's about a week ago, and I knew you guys were coming. Um, one of the, one of the things you brought up, and I kind of hoped you would put in here, is that this year, when you were setting up for your festival, you had, uh, the firemen coming down and, and doing their inspections, and you were told by those firemen that this was not a good setup, is that correct?
Correct, because the way that it was set up, um, was that we had to have double vendors back-to-back in the middle of the street. They're about twelve foot wide each, so when you put them back-to-back in the center of the street, now you're taking away twenty-four feet. And our street is only forty-five feet long, so you're not leaving them any room on the side of the road, on the curb, that's where you want it, for them. You're not leaving them any room down there, so it caused a problem. Now, if they're on the sides, you, you don't have to double them up, because they're all the way down the sides, and it leaves a much bigger space in the middle, because you're not splitting it up. You're putting them on the sides, leaving one whole open space. When you put them down the middle, you're splitting that, you're splitting it up, causing it less room on each side.
So when I hear you say this, you're, this isn't your opinion, this is what you were told by the fire inspectors that came down to inspect your, whatever they inspect, I don't know what it is, honestly.
Yeah, and then.
And then, and then you answered that one. How about with the police? Did the police tell you anything that made you think maybe this isn't the greatest setup?
Yeah, we were told that it makes it difficult for them to do their job successfully, because you create a barrier wall there. Normally, they walk down the center, they can see every aspect of the festival from one side to the other. Now, if something's happening over on this side of the street, they have to go all the way around to figure out what's going on, and then while they're over here, something else happens, and they have to go all the way around again to get over here, where with a setup on the curb, they just have to stand right there in the center, and they can patrol the entire area.
Thank you. And then my next question can be answered by either the administration or you. So when we close these roads, and this is what, and this is what I think I asked in the past too, who is responsible for making sure that the signage is up for the detours? So these trucks that are coming through just don't willy-nilly and turn where they wanna go? Because that is what's happening, and, and I'm not picking on the strawberry festival, but it seems like it's during the strawberry festival that it seems they're, the, the signs aren't quite set up right, or... I don't, I don't know what the deal is, but it seems like it happens more during that festival than it does the RIT Festival. So whose responsibility is it to make sure that the proper detouring is done for these big trucks that are coming through here?
So I, I wasn't there to set up the street thingies last year, but I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the street department is the one that sets those out, um, is who I believe set them out. And then, um, we, the only reason that we move them is for our car show. We will move, it opens up Second Street for the cars to get in, and then we cut off Union. So that's the only time that we touch them and move them, is to cut off those, uh, Union Street right there for the alleys and open Second for them to come in. But for the actual closing of, um, fifty-six, I believe the street department is the one that puts those out.
Is that, is that correct, someone from the administration? That it's, it's the street department that has to make sure those signs are properly placed?
For the detour, I believe so. And, but I know sometimes they go and set them out, and then the festival starts moving them around.
Yeah.
Because I, because that's one thing I, I didn't see in this legislation, was assuring that the signees for detours were put up.
And now the festival.
I think that's an important thing for all the festivals. You know, if we're trying to do a blanket, you know, if we're trying to do a blanket legislation, we need to make sure that, that that's definitely in there.
Right.
Who's responsible for doing that, and that it gets done?
Yes.
For safety reasons, obviously.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
You wanna move on? Does Billy wanna, Ramey?
I don't think we're gonna need any of them, because they were all there to give me more time.
Okay. All right. Jonathan Stoll, state your name and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Stoll, seventy-one Seventies, New York, City of Southeast. My favorite shirt is like, bring back a flight somewhere, she said. Circle of Humble Show, they set up the same way we used to, we used to allow.
Hey, Jonathan, can you speak in microphone, please?
Circle of Humble Show has thousands, thousands, or easily shut down, it's like, they set them on the side of the road, so it's the same concern. And I'll be, they all get dressed and stuff, and then, uh, but, but she said, you know, the safety serving, you know, you set up a ladder truck, you get a lot of room set up, like we set up last year, will not work for a ladder truck to set up the proper way to put out fires. We've never had any safety issues downtown, any of the councils, we had, we had, had, we had. And then, speaking back, not real, maybe back on her, but they had a survey came out, and how many people did it, does it make sense? What was the, what was the, sending people to put them back downtown?
Almost everybody wanted it to stay downtown. Yeah, it was like an overwhelming, like ninety-seven percent.
Anybody have any concerns about the late setting fire?
Just our safety services departments.
Yeah, safety services, and the vendors, from the business owners downtown, they were.
The business owners did have concerns. They did receive a survey that asked them specifically about the setup, and if they felt it was detrimental to their businesses. And then there was the survey that went out to the general public, asking them, would you like it to stay downtown? Would you like it to be moved, things like that? So the survey that went out to the downtown businesses, every single one of them that responded, sixty-three, stated it is detrimental to their businesses to have the vendors set up on the curbs like that.
So we got three hundred and sixty-five days here, and down RIT, that's two days, and strawberry festival, three. My idea about three hundred and sixty-five days for your business downtown, you got something else going on with your business besides the festival?
Well, I don't think it's just that. I think it's that, you know, when, when you're able to do something that brings a lot of people to downtown, like you guys do, being able to give those people that exposure, and being able to get people in the doors to come back later, is huge to these small businesses. You know, when they did Old Fashioned Christmas, it was, it was a very great event. And, you know, we go down and talk to people and see how things are going, and there are a lot of new businesses, as we know. And, you know, one of them was like, this was the best day I've ever had. And, you know, a lot of people maybe weren't buying a lot of stuff, but we've seen people come back because they had the opportunity to walk in and see what we offer, so.
Is that a fact, like the old way we used to do it, love the space in between the middle, or something like that, do you?
Well, I'm, we're just telling you what they said. They said that it, it backed up, so you, you guys bring down thousands of people, which you do, and thousands of people go up and down the middle of the road. How many are gonna go behind a lemonade stand that there might be trash bags or whatever? That's what they were, that's what we've heard. And, and walk on the sidewalks, right? When you are going down there to get your bourbon chicken and check out all that stuff, right? But if you, but they were saying that the way that they could just get the extra, just looks, right? The looks and the popping in and maybe catching a little air conditioning or whatever, that's, that's what I believe they were talking about.
Those, like, I haven't turned out before, I hope this ever happened, survey ever come out, we spent, taxpayers got to spend a hundred five thousand dollars. Taxpayer money up due, the land, up to the park, if they had all this information, food, and dust was up there, and the survey came out from the backside. So have you, we explained a hundred five thousand dollars to the landlord, or, that does left them there?
Well, it gives the opportunity, if somebody wants to have a festival, County Park, it's there, it's available.
Yeah, so as you know, Cowling Park, we're starting to do more and more things up there. We. We had the Fall Fest up there. We had the summer carnival up there. Lions did an event up there. These are all events that probably couldn't have taken place up there without this upgrade. So, you know, was there talks of putting the festivals down there? Absolutely, right? There's always those talks. But, you know, we listen to the people, but the upgrades still needed to happen because we're starting to get more and more events at Cowling Park. And we want to highlight Cowling Park on the off days to be able to do those kind of things and have, grow more and more different kind of events down there that needs electric. Well, I think that's, you know, why we have these meetings and why they're not going to pass this legislation tonight, right? It's going to be a month and a half before anything happens here. So to be able to have those meetings and go to, you know, the Public Service Committee meeting and talk about it there too. And, you know, if, you know, I know the wearing the two hats thing, it's always tough. We all wear probably two or three hats in this room, especially being volunteers. But also, you know, I would talk to your president too and tell him, you know, when he's going into these meetings, you know, these internal meetings that, hey, this is what we want, right? This is what we want. So.
Give us the mic, please.
You said it could probably take a month and a half before if something was to happen. My question is, our permit has to be done by March 19th. If we do our permit and it goes to, and it passes whatever the permit is, this isn't, this legislation hasn't passed yet, does that mean that if it is, we have to go to what it is? Or is it like a grandfathered? What happens in that case if our permits are done? And you guys have to pass the order that you guys have, whatever it is? What happens with that?
I think right now, the way it's set up is, we set it up last year that you have to do it the way you did last year. This is just putting it more official, right? This will be actually an ordinance. But right now, the administration really have, they have all the power. They decide at this point, right now. Now, it's kind of shifting over to us that it becomes our power. But at this time, it is the administration and the administration says, "This is how we want it set up based on our public safety, public service." And I would just assume that you're going to, if you're making plans, like you should be, I would be planning that you're going to be going the same route that you went last year. I don't know, are you going to let them extend, pass?
Well, we could talk about that. Look, here's the thing. You know, I know that people like to say the administration is this and that. We want to work with you guys, right? And that's why, you know, when John talked about, you know, we need to go back down to the train tracks, right? We were like, okay, we understand that. Like, it was tight, okay? We know you guys are trying to get the money off the vendors and that's completely understandable. So, you know, don't think that, please don't think that like we're against you or whatever. We took all the data that we got and we put something together, right? And now we have this in front of council and they can, you know, go from there. And if they make an amendment at the next meeting to the legislation before they read it the third time, you know, the next meeting is, what, 14 days from today? So, you know, there's a lot of time for discussions in 14 days to have. And if they want to make that, and then we'll take that into our thought process of when you guys start filling your stuff out, right? And then, hold on, let me look real fast. Did you, real quick, you said March what?
19th.
Okay, well, March 6th. March 6th will be the reading. So you'll have 13 days to fill your application out, right?
If we need to get some of our stuff in there, possibly extend it just a little bit since it's so close. I know that I thought it would really be a problem, but I just want to make sure we're clear. Can we extend it a little bit more than the 90 days we gave them? Not a whole lot, but a little bit since we're so close to that mark now.
And nothing against anybody, but it's never been in 90 days before and we've never held that against you guys. So, you know, we're here, we're really here to work with you guys and help get this thing figured out. So, you know, it'll be fine. Strawberry Festival will go on and we'll help you guys however we can.
So I don't believe our city attorney's here tonight, but your question's valid. So the last, if we go three readings, that it is March 6th, this does say that this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date period allowed by law, which is 30 days. So that actually is another 30 days. So how does that change that? I don't know.
Well, okay, that's fine. Mr. McDaniel's can put an emergency on there if he'd like. Or, like I said, if you guys pass it, right? You know, we can start working from that point even before the 30 days to help them get their application to what it is. I mean, you know, do I think somebody's going to go and file something against it? No. Do I think I'm not going to veto it, right? So it'll still, my thought is 99.999%, it'll still go into effect in 30 days and we would just go with that.
Were the main issues the timeframe, the 72 hours and where the vendors are set up? Like along the, in the middle rather than the sidewalk?
So the main, yeah, the main issue for the 72 hours, just making that extra sense. But the biggest issue that we have is the setup because it really causes problems for us with that setup and for our attendees. We really want our vendors back on the curb and to have that full walk space in the middle. That is like our biggest concern.
Did anyone talk to the fire chief as far as his opinion on ladder truck getting down through there?
I've reached out twice now, left voice mail to the fire chief and the police. You know, one of them have gotten back to me. So I have not, but I've tried. That's why I went in and pulled those, applied the codes just so you can kind of see a little bit of what Ohio says is needed. Because I don't have been here and I haven't been able to talk to them. So that's why I wanted to do that for you guys.
Well, yeah, I would suggest that maybe you do a festival setup plan. What you would like how it's set up, email it to fire chief, police chief, and then here to council and be ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, I definitely have it ready for you at the next city council meeting. And then, like I said, in the meantime, if you look at the ones that you guys have, that you guys sent to us, just want you to know that five feet is not big enough for food vendors. It's like 12-foot wide, at least minimal.
I will let.
That layout will not work no matter what.
I will let you know that we did, you know, as we were going through this process with Councilman Norman and Councilman Stahl, we did reach out to both chiefs and they did email us their concerns with festivals downtown as well as their thoughts on the layout, I believe.
I mean, I think she makes a good point that if cars are parked along there, the fire truck would have to go down the middle, which I assume would be the same setup for vendors along the sidewalk.
Yeah, but you're talking about, you know, creating an avoidable situation, right? And also, you know, nothing, I do this too. So I know what goes into these people's 10-by-10 tents and what's in there and what's going on. You know, we can hook a car and tow it a lot faster than somebody can move a 10-by-10 tent with 1,000 trinkets in it. But, you know, it's also about, you know, things that we can avoid to, for safety and, you know.
Well, it'd be good to have the fire chief's input, I guess.
And I have to say, I agree with you on that because our food trucks that are there, they easily move those chocks, get 10 guys and you can easily push it out of the way if you want to. Compared to those cars, now you're waiting on somebody to tow it away. You can't get the keys to move them yourself. Those people are probably in the building because they're parked in front of it. With our food trailers, if we do our food trailers there, like I said, you easily remove the chalk on those wheels, get you 10 guys and you can push that stuff around away in like five minutes. Probably, yeah, probably less than that. And those cars that are parked there are, my car, I did the research, my car is 16 feet and 8 inches long and I drive a Ford, so the average car is 16 feet long. That's more than what we're asking for our food vendors on the side of the road. Our average food vendor is about 12 feet. So a fire happens right now, your truck is pointing in the center of the road and they're going to put that fire out from the center of the road. That's not, I just don't, to me, I don't understand what the difference is. And that's my, that's my biggest question there. What is the difference if a fire was to happen right now on February 6th downtown than it was on June 19th downtown?
So you're able to email the fire chief and see what his opinion is on that?
Yeah, I hope you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more question since it was brought up. So these events where we say there's going to be 3, 1, and 12, that is strictly for events that close the roads, correct? Okay, because I had someone get a. Strictly for the roads closures. So if they had an event at Cowling, doesn't affect Cowling, you can have as many events down there as you want.
It's the same thing with the sidewalk stuff, right?
I just wanted to verify because I got a question about it and I just wanted to hear it from you.
When we looked at these maps that set out for us, with the Cobra shows on the other side of, down by the courthouse, there's nothing worrying or nothing showing the diagram of how they have to set up either. And that's an event that shows down the main road.
Well, I think the Cobra shows, since it's only six or eight hours, 10 hours.
Well, so is the downtown Christmas thing, one or a couple hours due.
Oh, we can add it on there if you want us to.
The Christmas thing doesn't count for that three anymore.
Yeah. You're asking for more government. He's asking for more, he's asking for more government.
Okay, on to Tommy Boyd, state your name, address for the record, please. Tommy, is that, is that mic on?
No, it didn't sound, it didn't sound like it was on when Jonathan was up there either.
Just yell, Tommy.
All right. Okay. So first off, apologies for the attire coming in tonight and having to leave afterwards, but wanted to make sure I stopped on in. First off, after hearing all that, I guess my biggest concern would be, you know, when we went through this in the end of 2023, I know it was brought up that the biggest reason for it was so the fire trucks could reach across there to spray off the houses. But now hearing that, you know, the data was taken in before doing that and some of our largest complaints are coming from our safety services, kind of brings up why it was changed in the first place. But that's kind of just an odd thought on that one. So what I'm in here for tonight is just a couple of different things that I feel, hey, if attention isn't really brought to it, then nothing really happens usually. And so the pothole at the three-way Lafayette heading out of town there. I'm glad that street department got a little bit of a patch there. But I was seeing if there was any expectations for extended work on that area of the street, Rex, or Pat?
Yeah, I mean, the weather. You can't do much with it right now, but they're continuing to keep an eye on it. And yes, there are plans to get that fixed.
Is that going to include the sidewalk adjacent to it?
I'd have to look into that.
All right, because, you know, that's kind of the big part there also is, I figure when we had the sewer line there, it probably said, hey, adjacent next to a sidewalk. However, now that sidewalk's been completely demolished. This also kind of comes up to, hey, while we're fixing it, are we actually going to do what we've been needing to do, which is re-striping Lafayette coming into town? The biggest issue is semis not being able to get around that corner because of the cars being too far up. And so needing to push that back 15, 20 feet there, get it re-striped, they can actually make that turn correctly. Lafayette 42 going out of town here, three-way light, right where that pothole is. Where that, not even near Kenny, the three-way light going right out of town here.
So at the Y, Elmen, Elmen Lafayette?
Yes.
So that would be ODOT, we could, you know.
I mean, right next to.
Try to talk to them, but that's ODOT.
Need me to suspend the three readings on that?
That's a, for ODOT? Yeah, that's a state route, so that would have to be discussed with ODOT.
Okay, because I mean, you know, once again, if it's a homeowner's liability for that sidewalk that you're making them pay for, I'd think that you might want to have everything set up there correctly so it's not continuously destroying their sidewalk. Next one is right across the street from there. There has been an electric pole there for about two months now. I'm glad the large half of it was finally picked up. But I'm just curious if we're going to actually reach out to Ohio Edison? Because I know it doesn't take them over a month or two to come pull out an old pole. You can tell that kids are hanging on it and seems like we're just waiting for it to keep breaking off until it might be gone. But are we going to be getting that fixed pretty soon? Are you able to call them though? Have you called them? Okay, so hopefully maybe try to give them another call. Roadwork on Center Street over here, is that mid-Ohio that's doing that primary work with that sewer line? That's us? That storm sewer there still? So that road fixing, was that an expected one? That's not, is that part of the Ward 3?
It was actually supposed to start in October and it got pushed back. And they said when it was started that it would be at least 60 days.
And. Because I thought we had done that earlier this summer, which.
No, it was originally in October, like October.
What, the Ward 3?
Yeah.
We've been doing, it's ongoing.
Yeah, I was about to say.
And then it's actually going to come across Center eventually too.
Keep going. Yep.
You know, it's a needed, I mean, obviously, it's needed. And anybody, I live, I've got it, I've literally got it right in front of my house. I'm with everybody who's like, God, this is a pain in the ass. But it's a needed, you know, you got to bite the bullet sometimes.
I mean, the main citizen that I talked to over there, I'm happy to hear that he doesn't have a swamp pool in his backyard anymore. You know, that was a big piece that, yeah, if we don't have water draining correctly, there's an issue.
Since we're talking back and forth a little bit, I also want to point out that last year, we spent almost a million dollars on our streets. And if I'm right, correct me if I'm wrong, because I missed the meeting, we've already designated about a half a million dollars more for this year for streets. So we are, you know, it's going to, it's with everything, you know.
900,000.
We've let it go and that's, I'm not throwing any shade on anyone, but it's been let go for a while. And it's going to take us a while to get it to where it needs to be. But like I said, we're making the commitment. We're freeing up the funds and they're, they're starting the projects. And I would say anyone out there to just be patient, you know, it's, you know, it's going to, it's going to hurt before it gets better.
Seeing if it was another kind of water main break or something that mid-Ohio might be helping with the street repairs, but unfortunately it sounds like no. But yeah, 900,000 I know went to fixing the part out by the bowling alley last year. So it'd be nice if we started looking into the plans and everything else that we got with the grading of all the streets and started repairing some of those. But I'm guessing that is probably something within our comprehensive plan that.
Well, comprehensive plan, I got nothing for you.
All right, I'll come back to my last questions on that guy in a minute. Next piece, sidewalk ramps. I had kind of asked Rex, I don't know if you had found anything else out about it since I haven't heard back yet. However, with us being started on those, having about 10 done, do we have a list of which ramps are going to be getting completed? How many? Anything like that?
I have basically instructed the concrete contractor to start basically the inward parts of the city, all intersections that does not have handicap ramps to start working on. on, since that's where a majority of your foot traffic is, downtown Parks area and so forth. And then work his way out as long as the money's available. Fortunately, the number of ramps has not increased any because it's been winter and he hasn't had weather to do anything. So really to have much new to report, I should have basically said that to you, I apologize for not getting back to you. But when weather breaks, he's supposed to get right back on it again.
All right, because yeah, that's one I'm kind of thinking, you know, hey, if we have a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant, I'd like to see us actually have a plan for how that might be being used. Right now it's kind of a, hey, he'll see how many he can do, you know, and I understand that, yes, there might be different costs for that.
Not all intersections are created equal. I'll just put it that way. Some intersections he'll go in and be able to break out the concrete, it's only four or five inches thick, he can get it broken out relatively inexpensively and get it repaired. Some of them he goes in and they're six to eight inches thick, takes a lot more work or a lot more hauling, a lot more expensive. So he would not commit to the number of sidewalks he would do. He gave us an approximate number and I'm, I'm thinking it was low, he can probably do more than what he said, I think it was around a hundred, a little over a hundred. You know, it's a time and materials thing, I mean, we can't expect somebody to go into the red doing this work.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, that's where if we maybe had a list of which sidewalks, we might be able to have a better idea on the prices also for that contractor, I'd hope that, hey, if you knew these are the ones we'd like to get done, if you know that one corner is going to be more expensive.
If you can look at a sidewalk and tell me how thick it is, so we can get a better estimate for each intersection, you got a job.
All right.
I don't think that's how it works. I think it works when you start taking an air hammer to it and busting it up and seeing how thick it is.
All right, well, hopefully then, yep, we can kind of keep looking into those, keep getting them knocked out next year. All right, on to the comprehensive plan. I went online trying to check this thing out, see what is maybe on there about it, see how you guys are doing with it so far. First thing was saying that it's being updated. I would not say this plan is being updated. You know, this went out nine years ago is when it should have been updated, when you began, Pat, but you know, at this point, we are developing a brand new one. As far as information on there about what's going into this, I wasn't able to find anything. It kind of says, hey, these are the general things that we're looking to do or what it might include, but it doesn't really say anything about what's going on with it. For these committees being into their final readings on what, February fifth or something? Or the meeting schedule there though, it was saying their final meeting for the steering committee, I believe, was the fifth yesterday?
So under the comprehensive plan on the website, there's a plan update that has links underneath it. Steering Committee, about the one in August, Steering Committee meeting from December, it just turned February. We did have, just have a Steering Committee meeting and we just had a meeting with them today via Zoom to kind of talk about the slideshow they put together, they're, they're redoing it. We wanted some things changed and, and they were bringing in new information from the committee. And then as you go down through here, it talks about, you know, you can give your feedback. What's this say? What would that say? And then what the plan is, what the plan's not. So we're, we're continuing to work on it.
And, you know, I even liked how it did have a little survey there, kind of saying, hey, what's our thoughts? And one of the biggest, you know, interests is the infrastructure. And so within our infrastructure, I'd say, you know, hey, sidewalks, kind of bigger piece there, as well as our storm sewer. And so that was one that we had talked about last year, hopefully two thousand twenty-four was going to be done. Have we gotten any kind of survey done for our storm sewer yet saying, hey, what's broken?
Storm sewer?
Yes, the only thing that we do still own since we gave away.
About that in the State of the City, so if you want to hang out, I'll, I'll explain.
I'll make sure, I'm listening later on, I'll be here, but, so that will kind of go over.
Yes, we're, yes.
What, you're playing with that guy? Because I know that's a big chunk.
Yep, no, storm sewer is a bit, is all, has been a big priority and continue to be a big priority. I'll just tell you real fast, we're getting an intern from Morpsy that is going to come in and GIS our whole storm sewer system. We hope he's able to finish it over the summer. We just interviewed him today and we're getting an intern in through Morpsy and will be GIS-ing the whole system, which is really going to help us moving forward with storm sewer.
Actually know what's underneath our feet. And so, yep, yeah, and once again, thought we had talked about that in two thousand twenty-three, having that done through two thousand twenty-four, but it seems still nothing there. Will the comprehensive plan mention anything about sidewalks? I know Mr. Eads, Mr. Norman, I've heard you guys mentioning, hey, we'd like to maybe start looking into this. Does anyone know anything about, hey, what that has started looking into or has maybe in plan for us as a goal?
Sidewalks in the comprehensive plan?
Yep. You know, tree damage, whatever else.
I don't know if that's what, something they would put into a comprehensive plan. I can ask them about it, but I don't think that's something that you put into a comprehensive plan, I may be wrong.
A goal for fixing sidewalks?
So.
I know you promised not to.
Yeah, so if you looked on the website, like you said you do, it says what the plan is not. It's not about regu-, regulations, it's not about, it's not finely detailed, it's not budget related, it's not about impli-, immediately implemented. Example of what the plan is not, quote, "The city will pave, insert specific street, name here, and fix potholes and do this and do that." That is what this plan is not. So if you want to go back on there, read through that at a price.
Oh, no, I read it perfectly fine. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, are you going to say, we'd like to fix some of our infrastructure with the sidewalks? That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for a specific street at all. I understand because I read.
Infrastructure is addressed in the plan.
Including sidewalks?
Well, it's infrastructure.
I'd like to hear, because, yep, that's one that I know we've been kind of dodging around a good amount. As well, I just kind of hope that includes the handicap ramps as well. You know, whoever is kind of within these committees, being on them, getting them finished up, you know, really looking into what our goals are within the next ten years. You know, if we don't have anything saying we'd like to be ADA compliant at least for having handicap ramps or somewhere that we can ride our bikes with our kids without getting off of them, that'd make me happy. Other than that, that's all I had, so thank you very much and have a good night, guys.
On to committee reports, Greg.
The Personnel, Budget, and Finance Committee did meet on January twenty-first. I'm going to give you a little bit of information here. I know our auditor's here, I don't know if she wants to give her report or not. Would you like me to do that? Okay, so for the, we'll just do the, since that was the end of the year. The overall revenue for the year for the City of London was twenty million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. And the expenses, we're going to say the expenses without the mid-Ohio transfer, yeah, those, those hurt us a little bit, but without that transfer was eighteen million, five hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. So roughly a two million dollar difference in the revenue and expenses if we don't consider mid-Ohio at that point. The, the Tax Department reported that overall for the year, and this number changed actually considerably from the month before, they had a large unexpected net profit payment that came in. So it actually says that the City General Fund with, had an increase of seven point zero six percent over twenty-three, while the Fire Fund was at seven point zero five, so virtually the same. So between the two, I mean, they're both up over seven percent from twenty-four over twenty-three. We do have a number of things we're going to talk about tonight. Some of these are going to be, most of these I think are going to come before us tonight. One thing that was addressed a few minutes ago was the appropriation for roads. Now, we did discuss the road situation. Last year, Mr. Long said I could use a million dollars for the roads and, well, we gave him five hundred thousand, but we had four hundred and eighty-six thousand coming in that we applied to that also, and almost gave us a million. We don't have that money coming in, so we're, we're going to appropriate five hundred thousand towards the roads. They did an assessment last year. We know what roads were graded as, as failing or poor, average, good. So we, they have a list of those roads and we're hoping that they address more of those roads that need more attention coming this year. So that'll be before us tonight. Otherwise, I think we're going to talk about everything else in new business. The next meeting will be February the eighteenth, five thirty, next door in the conference room.
All right, thank you, Brett.
I'll be attending a public service at five and a public safety at six on the eleventh, right next door here.
Rich?
Don't have anything.
Andy?
I have nothing additional.
Shannon?
I pass.
John? Michael?
I pass also.
All right. On to city official reports.
All right, buckle in, buckle in, here we go.
Here we go.
So it's my privilege to present the State of the City address for the wonderful city of London, Ohio. In two thousand twenty-four, London thrived through growth, transformation, and strength of our community. As we step into two thousand twenty-five, I am excited to see even greater progress and achievements for our city. Before discussing the goals and expectations for this coming year, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to the administration, our department heads, our employees, city council, and most importantly, our citizens. Your unwavering support, collaboration, and dedication have been the driving force behind our city's transformation and success. Every city department demonstrated remarkable commitment and accomplishments in two thousand twenty-four, leaving a positive and lasting impact on our community. I am confident with their dedication will continue to propel London forward into two thousand twenty-five. While I could spend hours highlighting the many contributions of each department, I will focus on key achievements in two thousand twenty-four and objectives we aim to achieve in two thousand twenty-five. But she's been with us a little over a year and she has prioritized seeking out beneficial grants, streamlining processes, and also engaging with the citizens with a primary focus to elevate information sharing for the city to the citizens. Within the first year, she was able to achieve a lot utilizing promotions and online reservation system that was created. She was able to double the revenue along with Parks and Rec for the rentals of Parks and Recreation, the launch of the new city website and the app, and the app has over fifteen hundred downloads. Help create numerous new events, most notably the How You, How You Steam, S-T-E-A-M, event with COSI and London City Schools, the Pumpkin Palooza, the Summer Carnival, which all saw hundreds of attendees. Digitalize our city forms, making submissions much easier and convenient for residents, enhancing our social media presence was definitely a big focus. With a successful Facebook presence and city website, information has gone out in a timely fashion, questions have been answered, and the ease to access to needed information has been a priority. We was able to launch the city events calendar and with Google Analytics, I can tell you that the most, oh, that that is the most visited page on the city website is the city events calendar. She has been a consistent presence for the administration at local events throughout the year. This coming year, she plans to maintain everything she's been doing, continue to increase our social presence, and continue to represent the administration to the best of her abilities by being a friendly and knowledgeable presence throughout London and Madison County. Now I will move on to the sanitation department. In two thousand twenty-four, we worked through being short-staffed with our superintendent being injured. Help was supplied by the street department to fill in during vacations and to catch up during the holidays, and a decision was made to bring in a temporary sanitation superintendent during our current superintendent's absence. In two thousand twenty-five, the sanitation department expects to really help with efficiency. This will be done by looking into buying another one-man truck, and that's, we're looking to do that currently. So when the loan ends on the current one-man trucks in August, we'll be able to purchase that one. We're starting to study the recycling system. This initially was supposed to make the city money, but it's ended up to cost us eighteen hundred dollars a month to recycle plus doubling the miles on our one-man trucks. Also, possibility of putting in a check station at the gate entrance to check anyone coming in that is bringing items to dump. This will hopefully stop people from proceeding to dump without proper notification. Moving on to the building and zoning department, two thousand twenty-four was another busy year for the building and zoning department. Our department issued a total of five hundred and twenty-four permits, in which eighty were for dwellings, houses. Permits are up thirty-eight percent from, from the year previous, and the department performed one thousand and fifty-two inspections. This is a fifty percent increase in total permits and sixty-five percent increase in residential permits just from last year. We've really come so far having only one residential permit in two thousand fifteen to now averaging almost fifty per year over the past five years. I'd like to touch on a couple of commercial developments. Dollar General, twelve thousand five hundred square feet, that building valuation is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and they were issued their certificate of occupancy in October. Madison Health, four thousand five hundred and thirty-eight square feet, that building valuation is one point five million. That issue, it was also issued in October. Then we know about Aldi, over twenty thousand square feet with a building valuation of four point one million dollars. And then coming soon, if you haven't, if you didn't see Facebook, two thousand four hundred and forty-seven square feet for Starbucks with a building valuation of a half a million dollars. And you maybe have seen all the great things going on downtown, all the renovations going downtown, and then there's a new concept coming out for the downtown social venue, which is on the corner of South Oak and West First, and working close with Westwood Collective on that project and moving that forward, which will really help foot traffic downtown. The building and zoning department will continue to update and modify the texts in their zoning code this year and work through all those recommendations. The auditor's office, like we spoke about, we had an annual revenue of twenty million, a little over twenty million, about twenty and a half million. And then annual expense after our mid-Ohio transfers was about eighteen and a half million. They have some goals for two thousand twenty-five, looking to upgrade their current software to their new cloud-based software, so allow the department heads to log in from any computer and not have to be connected to the server. It would also streamline the access point for the auditor's office with one login for both the finance and asset software. On to the street department. Two thousand twenty-four was filled with repairs and upgrades, like we've been trying to do every year. We completed the North Main Street Waterline Project, one million, almost one million dollars in road repairs were completed, worked and continue to work on the Third Ward Sewer and Storm Sewer Project, which was a seven hundred thousand dollar grant, and then we got the new Salt Barn. In two thousand twenty-five, they're going to continue to focus on the infrastructure with the Phase Two major storm sewer upgrade for Third War, the GIS and map the storm sewer system, which with an assistance of a Morpsy intern, who we also talked about mapping all of our sidewalks. So if he can get the storm sewer all GISed, he's going to move on to all the sidewalks, map all the sidewalks where they are, sizes, and also possibility of where sidewalks need to go. Storm sewer on Olive Street, continue to work on catch basin, catch basins and storm sewer lines, and then road repairs of at least a half a million dollars and maybe more, we'll see how that goes. London Police Department, busier for them, they had one thousand three hundred and seventy-one incident reports, over seven thousand calls for service, one thousand three hundred and eighty-one traffic stops, which three hundred and twenty-two were citations, one hundred and thirty-four property damage crashes. The department completed their three-year review to renew certification with Ohio Policing. They also made a lot of progress on their new, new police department building. In two thousand twenty-five, they anticipate completing the design and initiate construction of the new department facility in which we received a five million dollar grant. Develop collaboration with entities serving populations that are at risk for elopement to initiate a tracking program such as Project Lifesaver, further develop relations with businesses, especially in the downtown to foster a vibrant and safe area as, as that grows, increasing the community outreach through additional public relations efforts, and complete a traffic analysis of three per month to get realistic perspective on problem areas. on problem areas, and we have a new traffic analyzer that has been ordered. London Division of Fire and EMS, in 2024, they completed the vehicle exhaust removal installation in both stations, implemented the smoke detector program with Red Cross, participate in several joint training exercises in the county, replaced a majority of outdated fire hoses, and that was all through donated funds, implemented a new EMS billing company, participated in Medicare ground ambulance data collection survey, replaced outdated hazardous gas monitors with donated funds, and purchased a new chief's vehicle replacing the 2004 tank that's also a Tahoe, and that looks to be delivered within three to four months, and then performed several Stop the Bleed classes for local businesses. In 2025, they have a few things planned. They want to continue to work and ramp up community outreach programs, update all policies and procedure manuals, update standard operating guidelines, the car seat installer class is scheduled for 2025, participate in more joint training exercises, they're working on a bike safety class, continue their Stop the Bleed training for those local businesses, and continue to pre-incident planning on business and neighborhoods in the community. Now on to the law director's office. Very, very busy year for our legal team. The law director's office was involved with the prosecution of approximately 185 criminal cases, which include cases such as assault, domestic violence, disorderly conduct, and other misdemeanor charges. The office prosecuted over 300 traffic violations, which were primarily comprised of OVIs and driving without a license, and the office drafted 213 pieces of legislation for city council, reviewed contracts, and provided legal advice to department heads. In 2025, they're working to, they're going to work with the auditor's office to review and update the PPM. We try to do that every year, which will be coming to council soon for approval. The office will be starting a review of the codified ordinances to make sure they are consistent with the city's current operations and make any necessary revisions. Many of the codes were developed in the 90s or early 2000s, and they do need to be updated, so you guys will start receiving those proposed amendments within the first few months this year. Tax department, the department implemented their online filing for tax returns and quarterly payments for our residents. They also entered into contract with the Ohio Attorney's Office to increase our delinquent tax collections. London Parks and Recreation, it was another great year of serving the citizens, especially the youth, through the Parks and Recreation Department. They held the Fall Festival at Cowling Park, also the Summer Carnival, the outdoor movies. Something very proud of was we were able to extend the swim season till September 1st, ran a successful volleyball clinic that was free to anyone in grades K through eight. The return of adult softball was this year at Mary Mack, and then just continued to grow the youth and recreation, the youth recreation programs. 2025 is really going to focus on improvements like resurfacing the basketball courts, a skate park at Mary Mack and at Park Avenue, continuing improvements at Cowling Park with revitalizing the horseshoe pits and landscaping enhancements, continuing improvements at the pool with adding shade structures and repairing the floor in the main building. And then offer some new programs and events for adults, like the dance lessons and the cornhole league and many other things, and for the children, do some stuff at the parks like kite flying sessions. And then always try to work towards the construction of a rec or community center. I am proud of the accomplishments of the departments, which they have worked so hard together to improve the lives of our citizens. I am excited about the new projects and initiatives planned for this year. In 2023 and 24, we experienced significant growth, and 2025 is shaping up to continue that same momentum. Being able to use tools such as the citywide CRA, the Community Reinvestment Area, the Revitalization District, and things like the Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, have been instrumental in driving development and will remain a key in our progress. We are seeing tremendous growth in housing, retail, and restaurants, along with continued improvements to our downtown area. This year, we will continue to prioritizing, we will continue prioritizing transparent and open communication with our citizens, with our website, mobile app, and social media platforms, serving as a valuable resource for sharing information about the city of London. I want to emphasize that we are always here to address any questions, comments, or concerns. Over the past nine years as mayor, I've made it a point to personally respond to every email, return every phone call, and attend every meeting requested by my constituents. My open-door policy remains unchanged, and always if you have a question or would like to discuss anything, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Despite some challenges in 2024, London has shown a remarkable resilience and a steadfast determination to thrive. The economic climate, right, with rising living costs and increased interest rates has both been unexpected and demanding. Yet even in the face of these difficulties, I'm proud to say that our city has maintained its momentum. During this time, London has remained committed to progress and development. We have continued working hard to enhance the quality of life for our residents, ensuring our city remains a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. As we move forward, our dedication to progress remains strong. We're committed to listening to the needs and aspirations of our citizens and turning them into tangible outcomes. Together, we will shape a future that we can all take pride in. Now on to the mayor fun fact, which is the number three. The city has achieved an upgrade to its bond rating from an A1, which was upper medium grade, to a AA3, which is high-quality grade by Moody's. This positive shift reflects the city's strong financial health and significantly improves our ability to access capital markets. The upgraded rating achieved through the collaborative efforts of the administration, of the auditor's department, and many others signifies a lower credit risk and demonstrates a strong capacity to meet debt obligations. This translates directly into lower interest rates on future borrowing, estimated to be between a half a percent to 1% lower. The improved rating is a testament to the city's sound financial management practices, including robust fund balances, healthy net cash ratios, and effective budgeting. Moody's assessment highlights the city's strong revenue streams, balanced finances, and demonstrated the ability to meet debt obligation. This recognizes the city's efficient financial leadership, commitment to accountability and transparency, and overall economic strength, showing that London is primed to support continued growth, growing employment, and public service opportunities. I appreciate all of you for your time, and God bless the city of London. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Kennedy, you have anything?
I don't really have anything, but I think Bill would like to address council.
Bill?
So I guess there was an issue about the detouring signs for the festivals. The Strawberry Festival submits detour signs to the city of London. They submit them as using state routes. I can only do with inside the city corporation. Anything outside of that is handled by ODOT. ODOT has not been notified, so that doesn't fall on the city of London.
So is it our responsibility as a city to notify ODOT?
No.
Or is it their?
The festivals.
The festivals.
They had a letter. If you go back and look, I believe I did not sign off on last year's festival.
Because they didn't have.
Because they had no detour sign set up.
There we go.
So it was not the city who did not detour traffic. The city set a policy six years, seven years ago, that all truck traffic must stay on state highways. That's why we were working on Midway Street becoming a state highway. That's why we're detouring traffic on the 38th Ave or Midway Street. We are in the process of finalizing that. So it won't be an issue at this point, but just to clarify, the city had to detour the Queen Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
They do not set anything outside the city of London. That is going to. You cannot bypass one two city streets. That's why you guys submitted a permit to bypass on the state route 41. That is not by jurisdiction. They were setting about 42 to 41.
We have given you for running it this year, so I would, I would like to say, yeah, thank you for letting us know, and I would like to sit down and figure out one way that we can correctly do it this year, because we did not let us do it.
Thank you.
Okay, on to old business up for fifth reading. Ordinance 207-24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ordinance 207-24, sponsored by Shannon Trainer, Andrew Hitt, and Greg Eads, an ordinance creating 19 incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that once made will benefit or serve the parcels, and incentive districts requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing incentive district public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, authorizing payments to the London City School District and Tulsa Career Technical Centers, and approving and authorizing execution and delivery of a tax increment financing agreement with Tomcat LLC.
So yeah, this is up for fifth reading. It's also up for public hearing, I believe, on next council meetings, so we're just, the intention is to leave it on. We do have an appointment scheduled for tomorrow to have some of our questions regarding this legislation addressed.
Any other discussion on this thing? On to ordinance 208-24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 208-24, sponsored by Shannon Trainer, Andrew Hitt, and Greg Eads, an ordinance authorizing the city of London, Ohio to accept title to certain real property located within the city and immediate transfer title back to the current owner for the purpose of implementing tax increment financing pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709, 41, and dispensing with the requirement that this resolution must be read on three different days pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 73117A.
Same, this is, it goes hand in hand with the other, satisfying a statutory requirement of the prior ownership of property to qualify for the TIF. Plan is to leave it on so that it is coming up for vote with the same after the public hearing on the 20th.
We'll leave this on as well. Onto ordinance 209-24, motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 209-24, sponsored by Shannon Trainer, Andrew Hitt, and Greg Eads, an ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of London, Madison County, Ohio, to be a public purpose pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 570941, declaring such property to be exempt real property taxation, designating improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be public purpose, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing the execution of tax increment financing TIF agreement, and providing related authorization pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 570941, 570942, 570943, 5709832, and 570985.
This is another TIF for the parcels that are non-residential. Again, a public hearing is scheduled on the 20th. We are meeting with council tomorrow to have some of our questions regarding specifics of this other TIF agreement addressed. Plan is to leave it on.
On to Resolution 210-24, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 210-24, sponsored by Shannon Trainer, Andrew Hitt, and Greg Eads. The resolution determining that a petition to establish the London Gateway New Community Authority is sufficient and complies with the requirements of Section 34903 of the Ohio Revised Code in form and substance, setting the time and place for a hearing on the petition and authorizing the notice of publication of such hearing. Public hearing is scheduled for February 20th, 2025, regular council meeting.
This would be the structure of the new community authority that would encompass both TIF areas previously described. Again, public hearing is scheduled this, but the next council meeting, we've got an appointment scheduled for tomorrow in order to have some of our questions regarding this proposed legislation addressed.
Okay, on for a third reading. Resolution 101-25, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 101-25, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations the council would like to purchase Civic Plus.
So the discussion was to buy a program for our clerk to use. It's designed for clerk usage. My personal thought, it was probably a better solution, be in one place. But at the last council meeting, if you remember, Eve Breedlove discussed the fact that she thought that there was another way to do this. We asked our clerk to sit down with her and see what his thoughts were. I don't know if you want to share this, Josh, or would you like me to, Mr. President, the email?
Have it up.
I do. According to our clerk, it says, I want to share an update following my meeting with Eve today regarding Civic Plus solution versus the Zoom and Adobe options. We had a productive discussion. Eve demonstrated some great features of her plan based on what she shared, I believe, versus solution addresses, pardon me, addresses our current issues effectively while still coming in at significantly lower cost. I would suggest that we do not move forward with Civic Plus, but go forward with getting me a subscription to Adobe. Eve stated they plan on, or plan to work on getting Zoom, which the city's already paid for, get that capability put here in this auditorium. So that's from our clerk. As far as I'm concerned, I still think the other is a better solution overall. However, this was to make the clerk's jobs easier, right? We want to make it easier for him, and it's his recommendation. We do not move forward with that.
All right. Any other discussions? What our council wishes?
Make a motion, we adopt.
A second.
Councilman Eads?
No.
Councilman McDaniel?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Hitt?
No.
Councilwoman Trainer?
No.
Councilman Stahl?
No.
Councilman Norman?
I gotta say no? No, no.
Okay, Resolution 101-24 has failed. Up next, Resolution 102-25, can I get motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 102-25, sponsored by Michael Norman, a resolution increasing appropriations the council would like to enter into contract with Street Scan for Sidewalk Assessment.
So I'm, I'm trying to pull it up, but in general, it's basically software that will go through and map out our sidewalks, rate those sidewalks, and enable us to know how bad or, you know, how bad or how good our sidewalks are when and where. It's very similar to the street grading that we had done about a year or so ago, and that we're using, we used last year, and I'm assuming we're going to use again this year with the 500 that's been appropriated. It's just instead of doing streets, we're doing sidewalks. I think, you know, it said that we were putting the cart before the horse. I think this is actually the horse that gets us going and lets us know how much it's going to cost and how bad our situation really is. I know there was a concern about, you know, are we going to make the poor old lady who's on a fixed income, you know, fix her sidewalks? That isn't what this is about. This is about us knowing what our problem is. This gives us that first step so that we can go to that second step and figure out, okay, now we know where these problem areas are. We know what these are, where they are, how We know what these are, where they are, how they are. And with this software, it enables us to reach out and get estimates on what it would cost to fix those things. Because now we have a specific area, a specific grade for that, and it gives us a dollar amount, right? And then, then we worry about how are we going to pay for it? So, you know, and if, we, we have to start somewhere. The, the thing of, you know, we can't force people to fix their properties or how terrible are we to do that? You know, if that's the mentality we have, listen, Third Ward, and I live there, Third Ward, terrible sidewalks. But, you know, if we let Third Ward continue to have terrible sidewalks and you live over back behind Walmart. And you see that the city is not making you keep your properties up to code, you know? It's the argument that, you know, you're going to make us the bad guy and we're going to have to force people to do this is kind of, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that's a valid argument because if, you know, if, if we don't start somewhere, it's going to spread, you know? So, but this, this software program, that's what it does for us.
Question. Mr. Mayor, in your state of the city report, did you say that Morpsy would evaluate sidewalks?
So evaluate is probably not the word I would use. So what we're going to try to get him to do is initially, first thing, top priority is GIS, the storm sewer, okay? All the outlets into the creeks, where it all is, every catch basin. And then as we work through that, a thing that we talked about that he could possibly do is map all the sidewalks. So he would map them all and then depending on time, you know, the size of them, how wide they are, and then possibly start looking at where defects are. I don't want to promise that because our main priority is, but there is a possibility that we could use this gentleman to do that.
I suppose there wasn't any discussion about cost for something like that?
With him?
Yeah, through Morpsy to look at.
This is with the intern?
No, with, through Morpsy.
Is there any cost associated with?
For the intern? Like how much the intern's going to cost us?
Not mean to evaluate the sidewalks.
Is there a cost associated with that intern?
Yes, and it's six hundred and seventy five dollars. And we get a, six hundred and seventy five dollars and we get an intern for the summer. Morpsy has got a grant to pay for said intern. Now we will have, there is a couple of things that we'll have to pay for, like drug tests and things like that, internal stuff, you know, we might have to buy some programs or whatever, but they're paying, they're paying the gentleman to do the internship. I'm sorry, is that the question or am I reading it wrong?
Yeah, I think I understand. So what's the cost of the grading sidewalks through this StreetScan?
Oh, it's, it's fifty thousand dollars. But again, you know, you, you, this could happen. This will happen. And it needs to happen. You know, this, this isn't something willy nilly that we want to turn over to an intern. I mean, this is something that has been talked about. It's a, it, you go, you talk to anybody, any of us that are elected and we're going out and getting our signatures. I, it's sidewalks, sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalk. It's all I ever hear is sidewalks. The sidewalks are terrible. When are we going to do the sidewalks? You know, he's saying that he doesn't even know if he's going to be able to get the GIS done for the infrastructure for the, for the sewers. That's what he said at the beginning. He said, if he can get them done this year, this summer, that's what he said about the infrastructure. We're hoping that he can get them done. That doesn't mean he's going to get them done. He said, we're hoping. So if you're hoping he's going to get that part of it done, then where's the hope that he's going to have extra time to get the sidewalks done? This is a sure thing, that's a pipe dream.
Mr. President, we already have ordinances in place. Say your sidewalk's supposed to be kept in repair. We do not enforce those ordinances. At some point, somebody has to put together a program, whether, whether that is the administration, whether that's the street, whether whoever that is, somebody has to put together a program. I, I think it's going to be incumbent upon council to help with that. And I don't think we can put together a program on how to move forward, considering the person that may not be able to afford those. How do we move forward if there's an area that doesn't have a sidewalk? What do you, how do you want to address that as council? They didn't have a sidewalk when the house was put in. Are you going to force them to do that? Is there going to be legislation that says if the property sells, then a sidewalk has to be put in to be brought up to code at that point? There's lots of things, but we don't go to that step until we know what our problem is. This is the problem, this is going to help find what the problem really is. The purchase of a program, which the mayor just mentioned, they may have to purchase a program for the intern to use to do some of this work. That's built into this. This company does the GIS work. Now what, what, what they do may have to be enhanced a little bit and maybe that intern can do that. This will be the places, there is no sidewalk, right? They're going to, they're going to check our sidewalks, they're going to look at those, they're going to videotape those, they're going to be able to say, this is, on a grade of one to ten, this sidewalk area is a seven. However, this, this period may be a two. However, they grade that, they're going to do that work for us. So I, I really think the can has been kicked down the sidewalk long enough that, for, through many administrations, it's just, nobody has the willpower to, to want to enforce the laws that we have in place. And at some point, somebody's got to be the bad guy. And I don't want to be the bad guy. I don't want to tell people they have to do this, but we have the ordinances in place that we just aren't enforcing for whatever reason. I'd like to have the teeth behind this and to know exactly what it is we need to do.
Well, I also, I firmly believe that once we have a clear handle on what the problem is, where the problems are, what the costs associated with those problems are, then you can take those next steps to say, okay, well, what kind of grant funding, what kind of, you know, if there's any sort of a public assistance, financial assistance? And if it comes down to legislation, maybe we need to have some money set aside in order to create sidewalks where they don't exist. I firmly believe with Mr. Norman that we have to have a clear, clear understanding of, of the, the size of the issue before us and we all know that it's a monster. And leaving it to some college intern I don't think is going to do this problem justice.
Seems like the public will have to talk about this?
Not after the meeting.
Well, wait a minute, can I ask him what his thoughts are about that?
No, we're not doing town hall now. I mean.
We've already had our public session.
Right.
Okay.
Any other?
Seems a little limiting, but okay.
Any other discussion up here on it?
I make a motion, we adopt.
Second.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
McDaniel, I'm sorry. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, sir.
All right, resolution one oh two dash twenty five has passed. On to new business. Resolution one oh three dash twenty five, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one oh three dash twenty five sponsored by Greg Eads. A resolution increasing appropriations, police donations.
So the police gets donations on a yearly basis, whether or not they can, they spend those every year is up to the chief. There is leftover balance that we need to reappropriate that he can use. That leftover balance is eleven thousand thirty three dollars and fifty two cents. There is not an emergency on this, however, if we wish to take this through and pass it tonight, that, those funds will be available and that's entirely up to us.
I'll make a motion to. Beat you.
Beat me.
Suspend the three reading rules because I don't see that there's any kind of discussion about this, it's just transferring money.
Right. It was already there.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Moved it up.
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman?
You forgot yes.
Yes.
Okay, resolution one oh three dash twenty five has passed. On to resolution one oh four dash twenty five, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one oh four dash twenty five sponsored by Greg Eads. A resolution increasing appropriations, fire donation.
This is for the fire donation, this is the same situation as the police, there was money left over. He spent, he spent a lot of that donation money buying new hoses last year. So, you know, thankfully that money was, was used in a way that's benefits everybody. But that's his choice on how he spends the money. We have two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars still left in that account that we need to reappropriate. It's the same deal, it's not a, an emergency.
Make a motion, we suspend.
Second.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes. Moved it up.
Second.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Resolution one oh four dash twenty five has passed. On to resolution one oh five dash twenty five, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one oh five dash twenty five sponsored by Greg Eads. A resolution increasing appropriations, grant money from American Rescue Plan Act.
So I'm going to see if I get this correct and if I don't, the auditor is here to correct me. There was money given towards salaries for the police department, right? And it was very specific, that money was to help retain police officers and, and each officer that was here was entitled to get paid from this. However, you know, if there was an opening or someone changed positions, maybe that changed the money amount. So all, the money that was given to us, there was still ten thousand four hundred and forty three dollars that was left over from that, that grant that was given to us. We're not allowed to keep the money, we have to give it back. So that's what we're trying to do is appropriate this money so we can send it back and stay in compliance with our grant. Again, no emergency clause on this.
I make a motion to suspend a three reading rule.
There you go, Rich.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Moved it up.
Second.
Turn me off on that one.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, sir.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Oh, yes.
Resolution one oh five dash twenty five has passed. On to resolution one oh six dash, dash twenty five, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one oh six dash twenty five sponsored by Andrew Hitt. A resolution increasing appropriations, tree assessment.
So this is eight hundred dollars that's owed to the county for the tree assessment costs on city property. So it would go to the county and then the county would transfer it back to the city into the tree fund line. So according to O R C, the county has to do this, this way, is that correct?
Does, emergency clause.
So, okay, I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, sir.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yes.
Resolution one oh six dash twenty five has passed. On to resolution one oh seven dash twenty five, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one oh seven dash twenty five sponsored by Andrew Hitt. A resolution increasing appropriations, fireworks for the Fourth of July.
So this is an increase from last year. Last year we had twenty five thousand, this is thirty thousand to go towards fireworks for the city of London. Certainly if there's questions about the amount, that could be amended, but that's what's on there currently.
I have a question for the mayor. Last year, we put an emergency clause on it because the, the time slots and everything fill up. Do you feel that's necessary again this year? Because that would be more than happy to amend.
Oh, oh wait, well, I'll never turn down an emergency. But I did reach out to them and I'll let you guys know a little bit. I reached out to them and was like, look, you know, we're looking to do the same thing. It's in front of council, the money's in front of council, but we'd like to do it on the third. I also had them give me a quote of what twenty five would get us and what thirty would get us. So just let you guys know, for the increase, for the display opener, they would add sixty shells to that, which is like a fifty seven percent increase, I believe. And then for the actual display, they would add sixty two shells and the display finale, they would add forty shells. And then the multi shot finale boxes, which, two, let's see, there were six last year. Wait a minute, let me, let me just double check that, multi shot. There were six last year and there would be ten this year. So they're, they're going to add four to that. So it's almost a twenty percent increase on the fireworks itself and a hundred and sixty six shell increase. And a shell, I mean, you know, a boom, a firework.
So it isn't necessary to do it then? You, you can get it through without the emergency?
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to sign the contract if that's.
But I think, I think it's like first come, first served, right?
It is, it is, and I, you're absolutely right. I, I'd like to lock it in as soon as possible.
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to an emergency.
Second.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel?
Keep forgetting yes, sir, but yes.
It hurt, didn't it, Brent?
He said yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
He said yes.
Motion to adopt.
Eddie.
Second.
Suspend.
No, suspend, I'm sorry.
How about motion to suspend?
Second.
We'll leave the last one to Rich. Suspend it.
Been a long night.
It's getting there.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
It's with a N. I thought it was an option, I'm sorry. Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes. Who is that guy? Go, Rich. Motion to adopt.
Second.
As amended.
Oh, as amended, you added up too.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Norman?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainer?
Yes.
I expect Ready FM is going to have, have the music to accompany that again this year? I heard that, I heard that too.
Yeah, please, seriously, please reach out to me and we can coordinate all the times and stuff so we can line it up. And then if you could, like text me your number just in case, like, hey, something's going wrong, we're going to start five minutes later, whatever, I could let you know that also. Yeah, just get ahold of me, thank you.
President?
President, uh, February third is our meeting night. Are we going to, that's our regular council meeting that night?
Yeah, I won't be here, so, um, I mean, that's kind of far out. I know a lot of times when it falls close to the second, third, or fourth, you guys cancel, cancel the meeting. I would just suggest just to wait until you get to like May, see what legislation's on there, just to see if you guys are wanting to cancel or, uh, put it on a different date.
Okay.
Okay, resolution one oh seven dash twenty-five has passed. Onto resolution one oh eight dash twenty-five. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one oh eight dash twenty-five, sponsored by Greg Eads. A resolution increasing appropriations city road repairs.
Okay, so we addressed this earlier, that Mr. Long, I think, would ask for a million dollars every year to repair roads, and we can't always do that. But there was money left in the capital improvements that we didn't spend. We actually had increased that by, I think, more than five hundred thousand from one year to the next. That makes that money easily a target that we can spend. So this is an appropriation from capital improvements of five hundred thousand dollars so they can go ahead and start to bid projects out now to have roads repaired. There is not an emergency clause on that, but if we do suspend, or if we do amend this to an emergency clause, they can start the process earlier if we want them to. I don't think, we didn't think it was necessary.
I was gonna ask, can I ask Bill Long?
Yeah, you can ask Bill.
Do you? There was?
Well, it's not on here, so we can fix that.
I make a motion, we amend it with the emergency clause, because I've heard Bill say in the past that those slots fill up quickly. And we did a good job last year. I'd like to see it continue.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, sir.
I wanna get in on one.
Councilman Norman.
Oh, yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
We're gonna get Mayor Hart.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
This is a move to suspend.
It's been a long night.
Okay, I'll move that we suspend.
I'll second.
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilman Norman.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilman Norman.
Yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
All right, resolution one oh eight dash twenty-five has passed. Onto resolution one oh nine dash twenty-five. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one oh nine dash twenty-five, sponsored by Andrew Hitt. A resolution authorizing the auditor to transfer funds during twenty twenty-five.
So this involves transfer of funds to, uh, reflect the budget that we approved last year for this coming year, two thousand twenty-five? To a variety of lines. Is there anything you wanna say about it?
I don't, it's what's done annually. I, there's nothing of surprise. I think the only thing that increased was the pension transfer.
So if you remember, this does include a two hundred thousand dollar transfer to the fire department for their operations. We decided to do that a couple of years ago to help them stay afloat. They seem to be doing okay, but let's, let's not cut them short if we don't have to and continue on with that until such time they don't need the money anymore.
So I assume you'd wanna get this done?
Yeah, there, there's an emergency on it.
There's an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule?
Second.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilman Norman.
Yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yep.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilman Norman.
Yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Okay, resolution one oh nine dash twenty-five has passed. Onto resolution one ten dash twenty-five. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one ten dash twenty-five, sponsored by Brent McDaniel's. A resolution authorizing the safety service director and/or the mayor to apply for various grants.
Yep, just like it says, to get us some grants, hopefully fix all of our problems. That's it.
So, I mean, actually, this allows the safety service director to apply for grants, to apply for grants without coming to council and ask for each permission for each one.
Right.
But in order to accept the grants, we'd still have to come before council.
Yeah, and we did it before, but it expired. And I think Mr. Castle was gonna have it extended. That's not right.
Right, to apply.
Right.
Can I, uh, can I make a motion that we amend it, make it an emergency clause? And here's my reasoning, because, you know, I don't like to do them, but if we were to suspend and pass tonight, that puts us thirty days out, that puts us out into March. And I know a lot of these grants, they're, it seems like they, they're more towards the front of the year versus the back of the year. And, uh, you know, if we, we don't give them immediate access to do this, we're gonna lose about, you know, thirty, thirty days of something that might come up that we could jump on. That's my reasoning.
I'll second.
You wanna do what, please?
I wanna add an emergency clause.
Okay.
Because to wait, I mean, we're already in, we're already three months in, right? February, what?
Two.
We, we're two months in.
February sixth.
And that'll make us three.
There's, there's still.
I'm trying to rush the year along, okay?
Going fast, though.
Listen, so anyways, I'm just saying, we're about, it's gonna, by the time if we do it the regular way, we're gonna be about third way through the year. And it's who gets there first gets the money, right?
No, not always when it comes to grants, but you have to apply within that time period. Uh, safety service director, council, do you know, or Castle, do you know of any, any grants that are coming up anytime soon?
I can, I can tell you that I believe every Friday, is it every Friday? We get, um, a spreadsheet from the state of Ohio with grants, and even I look through them, especially the new ones that are coming out. So is there something like, we're eyeballing right this second? I don't believe there's anything we're eyeballing right this second. But you never know when that thing comes out tomorrow, what could be on it.
Generally, you have how much time? A week, two weeks, a month?
It just depends, man. It'll, it'll say, it'll say you have to have it in in a two weeks, or you have to have it in two months, or you have to have it in by the end of the year. I mean, they're all different.
They're all over the place.
It's all, yeah, it's crazy.
I just wanna, I just wouldn't want us to miss an opportunity to get free money.
So, so a question that I'm gonna raise about this, if we have to do this every year, I know the auditor even mentioned that she would just like to see the fireworks be part of the budget, and we wouldn't have to go through this every year. But we might wanna consider whether, whatever action we take tonight, that this just becomes an authority of the safety service director to be able to apply for grants without asking for permission to do so.
Sir, I believe this legislation does that. This isn't just.
Forever?
This isn't just one year. Yeah, I believe so.
Because last year, there was, it was just for the calendar year of two twenty-four.
Yeah. The law director added that in there, basically having it not expire. The only thing that she said, had pause with is she's concerned that a year, two years down the road, that some of the grants won't accept that legislation, and you would have to give me authority again later. But for the time being, she said she did add that on there, so it'll last for this year and next year until it gets locked on it. Until it's questioned, yeah.
That's good.
So it'll be in place until there is a grant that requires specific legislation? Correct.
Good. So again, I make the motion that we amend it to a emergency measure.
And I'll second it.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilman Norman.
Yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Moved to suspend.
Second.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilman Norman.
Yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Was that the suspension? Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Norman.
Oh, yes, yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yes, sir.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Resolution one ten dash twenty-five has passed. Onto ordinance one eleven dash twenty-five. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one eleven dash twenty-five, sponsored by Andrew Hitt. An ordinance amending section eight seventy-four, the codified ordinances.
So this is the legislation that's, involves the festivals or events that we discussed earlier. And what's been developed as far as setup and rules and that kinda thing.
I propose that we just leave this on, considering there's been some substantial discussion already this evening, and that sounds like that conversation has yet to continue.
I, can we go ahead and amend the, uh, the area that would seem like everybody agreed that we would increase, uh, see, no street closure event may exceed the maximum of, instead of seventy-two, make that eighty hours, which shall be set up and tore down?
Or you could.
I'd rather do it all at one time.
I'd rather do it all at one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I?
I take it back.
Can I share a couple of things with y'all about this? Um, does this work? Sorry. Hi. I wanted to just briefly touch on some points around this. This has been a year in the making. This isn't, um, something that was decided like three months ago and thrown together. This has been something I've worked on for the last year. We had the four hundred and fifty-nine survey responses that are being taken into consideration, the sixty-three responses from our downtown businesses. I have had numerous meetings with our safety services departments. Our police chief has signed off on this layout. It has everything that he had requested. Our fire chief has signed off on this layout. It has everything that he has requested as well. Um, and I double-checked with them again thirteen days ago, just to make sure that there are no updates and that they are on board. And both of our chiefs have said this covers everything that I'm looking for. Thank you. I have also met with the Strawberry Festival outside of the internal meetings. I wanted to make sure that they were included. We have had meetings where I said, hey, this is what we're thinking about and suggesting, and they have said, here's all of our concerns with it. And I took those concerns to the internal meetings, and they were put into there. One of the things was stage placement. And so we now have two options for stage placement. The other one was extend it down to the train tracks. So we extended it down to the train tracks. So we've been, uh, very willing to work with the Strawberry Festival. Rhythm and Ribs has said, hey, this is fine. Old Fashioned Christmas has said, hey, this is fine. So we have contacted everybody that could think of to, to make sure that they have input in this design that is presented to you.
I, I also talked to Mr. Long about it in public service. If he could look over and sign off on it, has he?
Mr. Long would prefer all the festivals were moved to the park.
So, so he didn't sign off on this?
No, he, his, his response is that he would like them all to not be downtown.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on this tonight? Okay, onto resolution one twelve dash twenty-five. Again, motion to read by title and number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one twelve dash twenty-five, sponsored by John Stoll. A resolution assessing the cost of the removal of high grass and weeds.
John, we got it.
Do you want me to address it for you, John? Do you want me to address it for you, John? This is what we do every year, whenever we send out notifications that grass is too tall, too tall, or property needs to be cleaned from excessive debris or what have you. We get that work done after the property owner fails to comply. We hire a contractor to do it. We get the bill. I turn around and bill the property owners for the said charges. Some people pay it, most of them don't. I will say that there was two properties that we had to mow and was on this list. But before we could get this legislation to you, those properties have sold in the past three months and have changed hands. And we don't, you know, we don't feel it's proper for us to bill the new property owner for something they didn't have any control over. I guess my concern would be, and I don't think we put an emergency on this, did we? I don't know if it's on there or not, I don't think so. These properties could sell again before we get this done.
He's very right. I can, I can agree with him about how fast you can sell a property. You can do it in less than thirty days. So I agree, there should probably be an emergency clause placed on it, so we don't lose this money that we've paid up.
There is an emergency clause on it.
Oh, I thought you said there wasn't, I'm sorry.
Well, I.
There is.
It's not on this list, so I don't know. It is on there? She didn't tell us when we reviewed it today. So I'd like for it to be suspended and passed if possible, so we can get it.
Thank you.
That's what we specified in safety meeting of emergency.
I thought we did. Cool. Make a motion to suspend the three reading.
Second.
Councilman Eads.
No.
Messed the whole chart up.
I'm sorry.
Mister, or Councilman McDaniel's.
No.
There we go, we're getting back to normal now.
I was afraid something's wrong with Brent.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilman, or Councilwoman Traynor.
No.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilman Norman.
Yes.
The suspension has failed.
Dammit.
Any other discussion on one twelve dash twenty-five tonight?
Well, just because a property changes hands, I, I think if there's a lien that's on a property, even if it changes hands, this is, it gets recorded, that has to be taken care of. We're being very generous just because the property's been sold. Yes, we have to do this, would it, should it have taken long, this, this long to bring this legislation forth? We haven't mowed grass for five months at this point, probably, so four months. So we could have done this and sent these notices out. We had a little bit of time to do it. And plus, this is a public record, so if you own eleven oh six Oxley Drive, shame on you. One thirty-eight Mound Street, one sixty-eight Tolan, these addresses are listed on this document. The city didn't want to be on the list for not, for not paying our taxes for the street, or for the trees, you know? Just because these folks, you know, we, we didn't put their name on there, but you can look them up, I guess, if you want to. So maybe this shakes them up a little bit. You're, you're being publicly called out for not paying or not mowing.
Rex.
I'll rebut what Councilman Eads just said. You do a title search, it shows no liens. If you do it tomorrow, it shows no liens. The property transfers, you're no longer responsible for any lien that we put on our property. So that is not correct. If we get it done before he do a property search, yes, they are. Okay? So I just wanted to put that out there. I will also say that the, there was three properties that's on that list that I didn't get the final bills for from the mowing company until November. Those bills were sent out to the property owners. It takes until, I have to give them thirty days. So now we're into December, end of the year stuff, I'm bringing it to council. So give me thirty days for the end of the year, trying to get things cleaned up. So, but I think it's pretty timely brought to council. Actually, maybe sooner than what we have in the past. That's it.
So you don't file, the liens don't get filed until you get the bill, is that right?
This, this is what files the lien. Council action has to be done to file the lien on the property. I cannot, I can't bring it to council. I have to give the property owner due, due process to pay the bill that I sent to them. So the last bill I got from the mowing company was, I believe, November seventh. Bills were sent out promptly after that. I waited thirty days to get it. We were in the end of the month in budget time. I didn't get it to council right away, so. And it has, yeah, we have to go to committee to get it there. I mean, there's a lot of hoops that we gotta go through to get it in front of council. So it's fine. I never had anybody reject putting these on there, but that's okay. Further question, do we, will we have to amend this? Is there such thing as twenty-two Lincoln Avenue, or is it east and west Lincoln Avenue?
I think that goes by the parcels.
I think it does go with the parcel number.
It'd be by the parcel.
Okay, very good. Yeah.
Okay, on to roundtable. Councilman Norman.
So. Wow, okay. So I'd like to thank those who put me here. It's been a great opportunity to serve, but life happens, right? My wife has allowed me to chase my dreams and supported my crazy antics for over thirty years, and now it's my turn to support her, as she has an opportunity to grow in her career. Unfortunately, to grow, we gotta go. So we'll be moving to Davenport, Iowa area. This, this was not an easy decision for us, because, you know, we've raised our kids here, we have friends here, you know, we have family here, we have grandkids that are going to come up through London, and, you know, that was a big issue for me to get on council, was I, I wanted to do whatever I could do to make sure that my grandkids would experience the great things that I've experienced in London. I resigned this evening, because I don't want this seat just to be occupied. I want this seat, I want someone who's gonna be in this seat to represent and make a difference. And the sooner I vacate it, the sooner it will be able to be filled, and the progress that this council has made will be able to continue. Again, I've enjoyed my time here. I really have. And I hope in my short time that I've, you know, made a little difference. And, you know, we got a great group of people up here. I argue with the administration a lot, but, you know, it's, it's what you do. But again, I thank you for allowing me to serve you, and have a great evening.
John.
Last Saturday, at six, six, five in Spring Valley, somebody knocked the pole down. Said that whole, whole, in the town, south coast of the evening. The good news about it is they got it fixed halfway. Had to start way back in each circuit to turn it back on. I guess state's gonna put a roundabout there, about twenty-seven or twenty, I think it's twenty-eight or twenty-nine. So some, some good news there. And I'm out and about again. Last meeting, I went and had a, my left, my right knee fixed, so I'm allowed to walk down drive, so I'm out and about again. That's all I have.
Shannon.
Best of luck, Mr. Norman. It's a pleasure.
Yeah, I'd like to say good luck also. I appreciate the, all the research you've done and the details you've looked into, and I'm sure it's helped the city out, you providing your services to the council.
Michael, piggyback off Andy. Thank you for your time, all your, all the time you put into, I mean, all your research. Really do appreciate it. Wish you best of luck there in Iowa. Good luck. Rich?
Thank you. I'm just kinda wait late.
Did you see it coming, did you?
No, no.
I, I figured the mayor would be like, Merry Christmas, Happy Birthday.
I want to thank you for all the input that you've put in, all the work you've done. I know you've done a lot of things behind the scenes that you don't get a lot of credit for. And when you first come on council, I was a little skeptical, but you, you did a great job, and I appreciate you. And I want that shirt before you leave. So I think I'm fit at just about right. But good luck to you, God bless you, safe travels out there. And I, I just hope that, I'll be praying for you. I just hope everything works out great for you. You deserve it. Wow. Want to thank all of our city employees for jobs well done. I want to thank fire department and all the other fire departments that came in. We had a house fire, bad one, a week or so ago. Mutual Way, thank God we've got it. But I just want to thank everybody. Everybody got out of the house okay. And, you know, when people are running out, firemen are running in. It's like when there's danger, somebody's shooting, everybody's running, police are running in. So I'll say it again, next time you see a fireman out there, thank him. You see a police officer, thank him. Buy him a cup of coffee and a doughnut. They probably won't take it, but, you know, at least shake their hand and pray for them, pray for their safety. Great job tonight, council right on, right on tonight. Great job, I appreciate you all, I love you all. Looking forward to this year, I think it's gonna be a great year for London. We get this other thing set up and get the houses going. The more people you get in, the more businesses are gonna come. Everybody wants nice restaurants and things like that. The more people come in, those restaurants will start looking at us. They're not gonna come with ten thousand people, and you got fifteen, twenty thousand, they'll, they'll, they'll come. So I think this will be an exciting year for us, looking forward to it. God bless everybody, God bless the city of London, and take care of us. Safety meeting will be Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, the eleventh, six P.M. in the conference room. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and thank you, Mr. Norman, for all you've done. And I'd just like to let council know that I'm, we'll be bringing to the finance meeting, I think it's the eighteenth, a half a percent income tax credit for the folks working out of town, like the one that was taken away from us in August of twenty twenty. This one won't be attached with the fire department, though it'll come out of general funds, so I'm just making you aware of that. I guess the reason for taking it was, I heard, was because of COVID, but like all the other COVID restrictions, maybe it should have just been made temporary at the time, so. You heard the city report today, and from all accounts, the city's doing fine, and this really isn't gonna hurt at all. I think it's the least they can do. That's all I have, thank you.
Greg?
First of all, I want to congratulate Circleville, Ohio. Circleville, Ohio was just granted twenty million dollars to put in a railroad overpass. If there is any one thing that people in this town have complained about ever since I was a child, probably ever since there were trains and buggies, is you can't get around the trains. When you think about Circleville, where Court Street is, there, most of Circleville's on the other side of that, but they got money to do the research, to apply for this, and they rewarded twenty million dollars. There's federal money. If we want to go after it, they do this every two years or so. There's money out there that is available. So I would love that we had that same setup, that we could do that. So I read that last night, and I just, good, good for them. Moving on, you faced adversity. You volunteered to be put on council. While there was an empty seat, you were refused. You hung through it, you went out, you were an advocate for your third ward, you were advocate for the people of London. Mr. Norman, I want to thank you for your service. I think we lose a lot when we lose you, whether or not we always agree or not, you'll do the research and you'll come with us, you'll come to us and say, this is why I think we should do it, and here's, here's the documentation, or here's what I found. So I want to thank you, best of luck to you in Iowa, and I appreciate it.
Say give Ms. Kate.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I, I know. Hey, can I keep this?
Who else is gonna use it?
You never know, there's, there's other Michael Normans out there. Thank you.
Michael, did you have a computer or?
Nope, I, I, I use my own. So, hey, you know, I have a couple of days to clear out my email.
I don't think you can clear it out.
I mean, not clear it out, but, you know, go through it. I don't need cleared out.
Good thing we've got nice comfortable chairs now, though.
Well, it was a long meeting, a fun meeting.
Nominate for your spot?
Wasn't as long, it was pretty close. Quite.
Brett, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I kept saying, forgot the yes, you forgot the.
The first time I said McDaniel's, I said, oh, I'm sorry. Huh? Yeah, I got it.
Yes, I figured you, I figured you, of all people, would be the one to, yeah, but that's.
What's that?
I wish, Brett, I wish, I wish, I wish I would have said the city address at the end, because I would have changed. Number eight, three. Eight pieces of legislative rose. It didn't pass seven nothing, and three added an emergency to it, seven nothing.
And when, when?
I felt like Sanford, son.
That's why I told, I told Rex, he had.
I'm coming, I'm coming to business, I'm coming to see you.
I told you, I said, you needed, you had a helper.
I said, yeah, with the last bit, I said, well, we can't get him.